This is a neighborhood. We live in modest houses. In a neighborhood that was planned 60 years ago. There was never any intention that businesses would be allowed here because it has been zoned residential all this time. The fact that the developer managed to get a law passed which overrides these zoning laws does not change the fact that we are still a residential neighborhood. We don't want a 10,000 square foot building in place of Marge and Pete's house. When we have complained about the buses, the buck gets passed.
You know, listening to this, I just, I'm really against having a house of worship in a residential area.
The state of New York says that houses of worship belong in a residential zoning district.
We don't have, we don't have a say. We don't have a say.
Okay.
We don't have rights. You tell me where our rights are as residents of Chestnut Ridge. We are not going to have any rules or any rights at all. This is wrong. How would you like this in front of your home? Or two or three homes? How would you like this? This is a residential area. This needs to be put on a main street, not in a residential area. This is wrong. I don't even believe why we're even having this conversation. What are you guys going to do, any of you? You listen to us tonight. You hear us emotionally upset about this. The area obviously has changed within the last five years. We call the police. The buses come through. They do what they want. They don't follow the rules. They don't social distance. They don't put masks on. You know what this is going to bring? It's going to bring more traffic. There's enough buses that are coming through that we have to deal with this. This is wrong. It doesn't belong here. And I'm wasting my time because I feel like I'm talking to a wall. I don't know how many times I have called Chestnut Village Hall up complaints about certain things going on that's illegal. Do you, do they return my calls? No. Do they even have the audacity to investigate what's going on? No. So who do I go to? I call the police. The police, our hands are tied. They can only do so much. I'm done.
We heard you. Thank you.
Yeah, you heard me talking to a wall. That's what I'm talking to, a freaking wall.
Okay, does someone from the owner, whether it's Mr. Stroh, Mr. Chergan, wish to make a brief presentation about the project?
Okay, so this is, this is 5 Samuel. We're seeking approval for, to have a shul here. It's a single lot.
Stuart, before you start, I just want to point out for the people, members of the public that are connected to the meeting, that are interested, you know, in this project, that this project is being filed under Local Law Number 1 of 2019 as a neighborhood place of worship. So there are three classifications to these. There's a community place of worship, neighborhood, and residential gathering place. This one falls into the category of neighborhood place of worship. Okay, Stuart?
Thank you. For the record, Stuart Stroh, broker engineering. I'm the engineer for the applicant. This is an application for a proposed synagogue that will serve the residents of the Dexter Park neighborhood. The property is located at number 5 Samuel Road. It's on the south side of Samuel Road and it's about 350 feet east of the intersection of Brookview Boulevard. The property is located in the R-25 zoning district. It currently includes a single-family dwelling, which will be removed as part of this project. The parcel is 36,890 square feet. Again, this is in the R-25 zone. So this is a parcel of over 36,000 square feet. It's actually an oversized parcel in the R-25 zone. And I think most of the planning board members know many of the parcels in the R-25 zone are actually undersized as a result of their initial development, which was done as average density subdivisions, which helped create the parks in the neighborhood. So the neighborhood place of worship is a conditional use that is allowed in the R-25 zone. The law, as you know, was enacted within the last couple of years to allow these type of uses in the residential neighborhoods. The synagogue is proposed to be constructed on the front portion of the property and parking lot would be on the back. You see the plan on the screen showing the configuration of the property. The, in consideration of the dimensions and shape of the parcel, we're proposing a traffic circulation pattern, which is one way in and one way out. So there's a 12-foot entrance driveway on the westerly side of the property and there's a 12-foot wide exit driveway on the easterly side of the property. The project has been designed in accordance with the majority of the standards for the conditional use, neighborhood place of worship. There's a list of conditional use requirements. They are included on the plan. They were also included in narrative. I'm not going to go through every one of them. Of course, I'll be glad to answer any specific questions that you might have when I'm done with the presentation. But in accordance with those regulations, the project includes several accessory uses. So in addition to the main sanctuary, the allowable accessory uses that are proposed include a library, an office, a kiddish room in the basement, and a warming kitchen. There are no cooking facilities proposed in the project. There will be no catering as part of the project. And it's, I think, well-known at this point that the kiddish room is not used simultaneously with the sanctuary. And the way that it operates is the sanctuary is used for the religious services and then after the religious service, the congregation goes to the kiddish room for the kiddish, which the same congregants use the main sanctuary and then move to the kiddish room. They're not used simultaneously. The applicant in this project spent over two years searching for an ideal site within the Dexter Park neighborhood that could be developed in as much conformance as possible with the conditions of the neighborhood place of worship. Several sites were considered and as I noted earlier, the vast majority of lots within the neighborhood are non-conforming in respect to area or lot width or both. This lot is non-conforming in respect to lot width. The lot is narrower in the front and it widens toward the back. That is a significant consideration in terms of how the project was designed. The, the conditional use requirements are such that they don't allow parking between the building and the street. So in effect, the building has to be located on the front part of the site and the parking has to be located on the rear of the site. Because of the shape of the site and the additional need for religious purposes to orient the sanctuary so that the congregants face the east, that dictated the shape of the building. And in order for the sanctuary to accommodate the congregation, it had to be of a certain size and square footage. Combining the fact that it needs to be oriented to the east with the fact that the building has to be located on the narrower part of the site dictated the dimensions of the building. As I noted, the parking lot is to be constructed on the rear of the property. There are 40 parking spaces proposed. I think at this point you're familiar with the parking calculation, which requires two calculations. One is based on number of congregants. One is based on the square footage of the building. The calculation based on number of congregants yields 40 parking spaces and that's what's provided. The calculation based on square footage of the building yields 50 parking spaces required. The code requires you to pick the larger of the two numbers. So therefore 50 spaces are required according to the code and a variance will be requested. However, it's important to note that the number of spaces provided is compliant based on the number of congregants. And reducing the size of the building would not necessarily result in less congregants. So we think the more important consideration is that there's enough parking for the number of congregants that are expected. Additional variances are required for floor area ratio and development coverage. Those are spelled out on the bulk table. And we're also requesting variance for lot width, which I noted is an existing non-conforming condition, but I think that it still requires a variance. In summary.
Stuart, Stuart, stop a minute because there's a, with the plan right now, there's another variance that you need. It's for the 10-foot landscaping.
I am jumping around in my notes and I can't believe I missed that. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I'm trying to help you out, Stuart.
Thank you because I'm jumping around because I moved it to the screen and I missed that.
Can I just stop? Can I just stop you for one second? So Mr. Stroh explained all the variances that they would need to be able to go ahead with this plan. This board cannot grant those variances. These variances would have to be granted by the zoning board of appeals. So I'm just pointing that out. This board can't approve those, these changes. He would need variances, which he would have to get on the assumption that the zoning board of appeals would grant them. He needs these variances to, to be able to provide the plan the way he's got it planned out right now on the drawing that we're looking at. Okay. I'm sorry, I just wanted to check that. So the people listening in understand that we can't grant those. This board cannot, okay? You may continue.
Thank you, and I appreciate you pointing that out because I scrolled past it the way I have my screen set up and it's obviously a critically important part. The narrow width of the lot towards the front of the property that I've mentioned several times now also dictates that we don't have enough room for the 10-foot requirement for the landscaped area on the sides of the lot. So on both sides of the, of the lot, along each driveway, we're proposing five feet of landscaped area, whereas 10 feet is required. And again, it's factored in by all of the things I mentioned. The narrow part of the lot towards the front, the need for the, for the orientation of the building and the dimensions of the building and the desire to have what we think is a safer operation of one way in and one way out. Thank you for pointing that out for me, Mr. Chairman. I was going to conclude that this project has been very carefully considered by the congregation. They spent a lot of time looking at various properties, the location, the availability of the sites, the, the design of the building, the configuration and layout, as well as the importance that it meets their religious needs as a synagogue. I've worked with the applicant to make numerous revisions to the plans before this submittal, trying to work out these issues to the best of our ability. They've put a lot of effort and time into it. They're really dedicated to constructing a facility here that serves the neighborhood and that everybody will be proud of and that respects the concerns of the neighbors in the area. And we appreciate this opportunity to present the project and I will be glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay. State your name, your full name and address to the record.
I'm Linda Leon. We've been living here for 43 years. We love our place and we don't want it to turn into a lot of traffic because we live right on Brookview, the corner of Brookview and Lilian. And I know once that thing is completed, what they propose in that street of Samuel, we're so concerned that our road will turn into like a business zone. We've been living here for 43 years and we don't want it to turn into something else. So please, we really oppose in having that construction done. We beg you to really oppose it because we don't want to turn into, like we are not used to it. You know what I mean? That's really our concern. If that could be stopped, we are not, we are not a business zone. We are a residential zone, a beautiful place to live in. But now it's turning to be like this and if that will not stop, then we'll be forced to get out of here.
Okay, the only way I can answer you is this way. The village proposed a local law which allowed these houses of worship in residential zoning districts. They had at least two hearings. I'm not sure, I don't remember if there was a third one. People spoke for, for their proposal, against their proposal. And then the village board of trustees, in concert with their, with the planner for the village, enacted these regulations called Local Law 1 of 2019. Whether our board agrees with what's in those regulations or not, as the planning board, we're dictated to follow the regulations and approve what's allowed by law. Now, there may be a situation, and I'm not saying it's this project, if there are conditions that are so onerous that the applicant can't meet the requirements or certain issues can't be mitigated, then possibly, I'm saying then possibly, a project might not be. But legally, they have the right to have a neighborhood place of worship in a residential zoning district and they particularly picked out this particular site on Samuel Road and that's what's before us and unfortunately, we have to review it that way. We cannot arbitrarily say, well, Linda Leone doesn't want it there, feels that there's going to be more traffic and we should deny it. We can legally deny it if they have the right to have it. We just have to be able to mitigate any of the issues that would affect adjacent homeowners. That's the only way that we can deal with it. Okay, so that's, that's the only way I could explain it to you. So now can we have the next individual? Okay, who is speaking?
Michael Weaver.
Comments?
Several things. One, the mailing that was sent out was never received by myself or any of the neighbors that I've talked to. So I don't know. One, nobody that I've talked to received it. So I'd be curious to see what the response from the post office is. There's a, there's a list and I won't be able to get through all of it. But I think that the structure is too large for the property. The, you know, the new building is maybe at least four times, close to four times bigger than the existing house, which is, you know, by the variances that they're requesting, you know, this is going to be five feet from my property line. So I'm concerned about the size of the structure. I remember reading something, I think from the board, saying if you would reduce the size of the synagogue to 7,000 square feet, it would take care of your offsets and your parking issues. So I would just say, I would wish this would be scaled back to a more appropriate size for the property. And the, the statement that this was carefully sought out property, I reject that because I know this property was never listed. It was sold within the hours of the homeowner calling a real estate agent. So it never got to market. So this was scooped up immediately. So I'm not sure how much planning there was for this property. So, so if it was scaled back, it would take care of the offsets. And that's one of the biggest things I'm worried about is offset to my property. It looks like the fence is within two feet of the property line or less. So the idea of 10 feet with screening, I'm going to have a fence right on the edge of my property, no screening. I'd rather have it, the screening and then a fence. I don't want to look at some six-foot plastic fence. So I'm not sure how that interpreted in the law. It just said there'd be 10 feet offset with a fence and screening. I'm getting, I'm getting a fence right on the property line.
That's, that's actually up to the planning board, whether the planning board would require a fence and trees or shrubs or one or the other. But that's, that's something that's down the road. It hasn't been decided.
I'm just setting out my concerns. The property size scaling back, the number of parking spots for the number of congregants, what's going to happen with the overflow parking? Am I going to be, you know, parked in front of my house, come out every day and find cars parked up and down in front of my house where I can't have visitors to use, come to my property? The congestion of the, I think, I counted the other day, we had 53 school buses go past my house. If we have overflow busing or parking, it's going to get crowded with that number of buses. It's going to be dangerous. Some of these buses are flying by my house. So I'm very concerned about the overflow parking and what people are going to be, where they're going to be parked if, if you don't have enough parking spaces in the, for the congregation. Yes, if, if you don't want me to hear my points at this point, at this time, I can write them down. And my wife did send a letter in, but there's so many things that I'm worried about from this, you know, dumpster basically five feet from my property line. Am I going to be smelling rotten food all the time? Are there going to be raccoons running around, getting into this dumpster? You know, there's, there's so many questions I have about this building and being a direct neighbor to this. This is going to definitely affect my life and the enjoyment of my property. Quality of life for me and my family. How are we going to deal with the size of this building? What, what's the height of this building? Am I going to come out and find a 40-foot tall building? You know, talk about.
No, the, the, I think the code indicates the maximum height is 35 feet.
This is going to affect me dramatically. And I guess I'll leave it as, I, I think the, the size of the building is too big for the property. Testing by the variances that they're asking for. I think if it's scaled back, worry about traffic, overflow parking and access to my property in the future.
Okay. Thank you.
Alan, they're proposing a 30-foot height.
Okay. Jeff? You know what you're supposed to be doing? Okay, got it. Okay. Next, would you let the next person in?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's Robert Hasselberg. I've been a resident of Chestnut Ridge since 1986 and I love the diversity in this village that it offers and will continue to offer. I have a couple of questions and then a little, some comments. I'll also be supplying all of these in writing to Mary Balak at the village clerk.
Right.
Another point that I'd like all the members of the public to be well aware of is that this H4W amendments, which were passed by the village board, are the subject of litigation, both at the state level and the federal level. We won't talk about that now because they're active cases. But it's not over. The law requires a stormwater maintenance agreement recorded on the deed of the property in the public records, which is binding on all current and future owners. It requires easements in favor of the village in the event the property owner defaults on the maintenance agreement. You have to follow up on that. Also, both laws refer to the New York State DEC impaired waters. And Martin, I'm sure you're aware that Pasqueag Brook, its tributaries and the watershed are listed as 303D impaired properties, which requires extra special stormwater and erosion and sediment controls. Are we doing anything on that?
As part of this review, yes, we are. We're requiring the applicant to satisfy all New York State stormwater as well as soil erosion and sediment control standards.
Okay, Martin, as I review both of those local laws, there are requirements in there that I haven't seen addressed at all.
Yes, Jerry Leiblstein. I want to speak to the impact to the neighborhood and to neighbors from the intensity of this place of worship as a neighborhood place of worship. From the narrative summary that the applicant provided, you will have, you will, there'll be activity seven days a week and at night. There'll be services Monday through Thursday in the morning. There will be nighttime torment study from 8:15, 8:15 to 10:00 p.m. Saturday, there will be morning services and also afternoon services. Go, another activity going to 8:15 p.m. And also on Sunday morning, afternoon and again evening, services to 10:00 p.m. That's just the regular activity. And also, you know, we, we talked about places of worship needed because they need to be in walking distance on the Sabbath. But make no mistake, that is only on the Sabbath and holidays, okay? The congregants will be driving and parking during the weekday to and from their way to work. We see this everywhere else. We see this currently at 312 North Highland, where the congregation is currently illegally residing with a couple of outstanding violations. Okay, so let's make no mistake about that. Now, that is all just the regular activity. Now, you, then there is the social hall. Now, you, there was talk of the kiddish room. The so-called kiddish room will occupy the basement and will be 2,800, roughly, about 2,400 square feet. In fact, it's actually labeled as a ballroom in the preliminary floor plans submitted by the applicant. So we're going to have bar mitzvahs, receptions, all other kinds of events occurring at various times. Then there's, so the concern will be, what about overflow parking? Okay, you've got a very small site there. We're supposed to believe that when you have these special events, there's only going to be limited to the maximum 200 congregants. So let's look at the history of 312 North Highland. I wish there were people here tonight who live there, but if you ask them, they will report to you that there have been a number of events with hundreds, several hundreds of people with cars parked double, double the street along Perth Avenue and et cetera. Cannot expect that this will happen, even though you're providing a parking lot. It's going to happen. There will be overflow parking on the street, okay? And we have no enforcement in this village. village, so it will be tolerated. Okay, now the last thing I would point out is that the owner of this property is also the same owner of thirty-four Balmoral Drive, which resides immediately to the back of the property, to the north part of the property line. Uh, I assume this person who owns it is also a member of the congregation. That suggests that there may be foot traffic going from Balmoral to his property to this congregation. In addition, the uh, there, there could be spillover activity, uh, activities from special events from this property onto his. We see this elsewhere when they don't even bother to come and be enforced. So that's all I want to bring to your attention.
Yes, hi, I'm Maria Hennehan, and I, I, I just want to start off by saying that I did not receive a notice, okay? Just for the record.
Okay.
Um, I moved here thirty-three years ago with my family, um, a parking lot for forty cars. It's going to be large enough to house two hundred people. There's going to be an overflow of traffic of cars parked on Samuel as well as the surrounding streets, gridlock traffic overcoming our quiet streets. There's going to be services three times a day, um, starting early, about six o'clock and ending at midnight. Our quiet street will now become a busy main road. Um, our street is too narrow to support this traffic. We have um, school buses that are going by, you know, that have so many more school buses than in past years, um, that some of them speed, um, and with cars parked, it's going to be very dangerous for everyone. Um, the law for the neighborhood places of worship was changed last year, but still, um, variances are being requested. Uh, this belongs on a main road. It would be much safer for all. I did send you a letter. Um, this was just some of the things I wanted to talk about. I'm also concerned about emergency vehicles. I don't know how they, and when we have snow, what's going to happen? Um, and the noise, I'm sorry. You know, our, our street is so quiet, it's so peaceful. Um, and that's going to change if people start talking outside late at night, early in the morning. Thank you.
Last name and your uh, address.
Yes, Suzanne Ducharme, D U C H A R M E.
Thank you.
Um, I, I have an objection to this meeting even going forward, since I also did not receive any of the, the required legally required mailings. I'm a community organizer, sir, and let me further say that not any person on Samuel Road received this notification. I would like to continue now with a statement since you will not adjourn. This is my statement, and I, I would ask that I please not be interrupted because it comes in at just about four minutes.
Okay.
This is a neighborhood. We live in modest houses in a neighborhood that was planned sixty years ago. There was never any intention that businesses would be allowed here because it has been zoned residential all this time. The fact that the developer managed to get a law passed which overrides these zoning laws does not change the fact that we are still a residential neighborhood. We don't want a ten thousand square foot building in place of Marge and Pete's house. We don't want a forty-car parking lot where their kids used to have their swing set. We don't want excessive traffic zooming up and down a dead end street. We already have to put up with buses zooming around as late as eleven P M. When we have complained about the buses, the buck gets passed. The owner of Five Samuel also owns thirty-four Balmoral. We can make a pretty good educated guess based on other projects of this nature that the intention will be to break through and to use both properties as egress to this. We have power failures every time the wind blows. How can this ancient power grid possibly support a complex that is supposed to have over two hundred members? The current noise ordinance in the town of Ramapo extends from eight A M until eleven P M, but this business intends to operate through six forty-five A M. How does this not violate the noise ordinance? If there will be a mikva at this address, has the EPA done studies on how the drainage of gallons of chlorinated water every day will affect the ecosystem? How does the developer plan to collect the rainwater that is required to make the mikva kosher? I can't stress enough how disruptive this will be to our way of life. If the developer wanted to build such a structure, they should have sought another location rather than disrupting and antagonizing the people who have lived here in some cases for generations. Would you want it in your backyard, three doors down from the house that your father helped to build? Would you want that added traffic and noise and pollution where you live? Then why do you think it's okay to do this to us? This project is morally and ethically wrong, regardless of whatever some law may say. Please do the right thing and stop this plan while you still can. Thank you.
Okay, first, I'd just like to s- state for the record, it's my understanding that uh, the state of New York has indicated in various legal documents or challenges and Paul Baum, our attorney for the planning board, can address that more than I can, that houses of worship, it doesn't, doesn't mean a Jewish house of worship, doesn't mean a mosque, doesn't mean a church, that a house of worship belongs in residential zoning districts in the state of New York.
Then I would suggest that the law needs to be repealed because it is not consistent with the current living conditions of the people who have been living here since the nineteen fifty.
Okay, I, I heard what you said. I'm just stating for the record and whether I agree with that or like it, it doesn't matter because unless the law gets changed, we're dealing with it. And based on that, we've got this local law number one of two thousand nineteen that was enacted as a village law, and we're empowered as a planning board to review a project based on these regulations.
Yes, sir, you're also empowered to listen to public input.
Yes, we, and, and, and yes, we do.
I do thank you for listening.
We do, we do listen, we do listen, and we do take into consideration everything that's said.
Yeah, I thank you.
Okay, Mr. Loringer?
I have lived here for thirty-five years. Uh, I have some very real environmental concerns because there is, there are multiple underground streams that feed into the Pasgak Brook, and I have seen no not, no information that says anyone has made any attempt to see if the construction of a uh, house of worship of this scale will have some effect on such underground streams and will such things as the rerouting or changing of those things to accommodate the uh, uh, the synagogue in question. Am I going to wind up with a foot of water in my basement?
We can't resolve that tonight. Uh, is there anything else that you wish to, to bring to our attention?
Yes, the other thing I would like to, to point out as consideration is since the operation of this particular house, and since it was going to have at least a forty uh, vehicle parking lot, it's going to require a certain amount of illumination for safety and for legal requirements. Am I going to have to live with, this is a question now, am I going to have to live with, you know, several thousand uh, lumens worth of parking light, parking lot illumination until uh, eleven thirty, twelve o'clock, one o'clock in the morning? Because that is also not part of what this residential uh, area has been used to, nor is it something that uh, contributes, contributes to maintaining the sense of it being a residential area. Because no one seems to have addressed that. I have not heard any addressing of what you are going to do to mitigate the uh, aesthetic and environmental concerns that this construction will have on the rest of the uh, neighborhood that surrounds it. You made the same kind of statement when you spoke in your uh, in your workshop regarding mitigating circumstances, landscaping issues that will minimize the environmental and aesthetic impact onto a neighborhood of a construction of this type. But I see nothing, have heard nothing of anything that is going to be done to do that. I have no objection to a house of worship, a neighborhood house of worship, but the size of this thing and the uh, the way it has been approached does not make it seem, now, you may very well call it a neighborhood and, and I don't know the distinctions in the law, but if it is to be a neighborhood place of worship, then the neighborhood has to have some attempt to preserve its character. And I don't see that.
What we've done in many cases is attempted to ensure that the type of lights that are being provided are shielded so they're not shining uh, into the properties to uh, either side of, of this particular uh, project like we do in other projects.
My last concern is just as a summary is my biggest concern is that rather than a, a project that will be uh, hailed to the neighborhood, that will become part of the neighborhood, what we are going to have is an edifice that will overpower, permanently change the nature of the neighborhood. And based on the fact that we are on Samuel Road is a dead end road, it is a narrow suburban developmental street. It is not a major thorough, never intended to be a major thoroughfare. Allowing for that, I am most seriously concerned, somebody's going to get hurt, somebody's going to get killed. Do you want that on your conscience?
Is there anything else?
No, I've covered it very much for later.
We, we, we hear your concerns. Okay, um, uh, who's next, Max?
Uh, next up will be Mr. Anthony Schout, followed by somebody identified only as uh, Jaeger or Jaeger.
Right. Mr. Schout?
So I just wanted to make a couple of comments. Um, first of all, it looks like this lot was purchased in July of twenty nineteen, which is after the, the local law was, was passed. So these variances and these hardships that the applicant is dealing with are kind of self-inflicted. They, the law was already out there. They knew kind of what they had to adhere to when looking for a property. Um, and they purchased this one in spite of it. Um, and I know Mr. Stroh had mentioned that they'd been searching for over two years prior to purchasing this property, which is comforting, except this local law didn't even come known to the public until February of twenty eighteen. So if they were searching for the property for over two years, we're going back to summer seventeen or prior, which means I guess they were involved with the village board in the drafting of this law. And if that was the case, they were well aware of all of the standards and minimum requirements that they had to adhere to. And in spite of all of that, purchased a lot and are attempting to develop something that can adhere to all of these requirements. So I'm just kind of pointing out that they were really self-inflicted there. Um, and I don't think, you know, someone had mentioned earlier a comment, I, I guess that N P V had said that a, a seven thousand square foot structure would kind of alleviate most of the variances. Um, and I guess I would support that a little more. I, I don't think the intent of the law was to build as close as you could to ten thousand square feet and then just apply for variances with whatever you could build on ten thousand square feet. So the intent of trying to develop that much is, is overreaching even beyond what the, what the law permits. Um, a couple of the variances that, that prior uh, speakers had mentioned are, are a little bit concerning. Obviously, the, the five-foot side setback, I mean, this is a large structure right on top of a property. Um, and I think just making the structure a little bit smaller would at least show that you're working a little bit with the neighbors to try to alleviate what's butting up against their property. Um, the other variance that concerns me is the parking. We know that's an issue, um, and that the, the parking, any additional parking that's needed is going to spill out onto the streets and kind of overwhelm some quiet streets. So, um, a- again, reducing the structure so that you can either fit more parking spaces or so that it reduces the uh, the, the required parking spaces based upon uh, the structure size, uh, I think would be helpful. Um, and, and then the, the last comment I have is just that, uh, I, I think a prior speaker mentioned that this congregation already exists and, and resides at three twelve North Highland, um, which has had ongoing um, issues and complaints and violations and um, for a few, at least a few years now, has been involved in um, involved or tied up in court with the village for a little bit, to which we are not privy to some of that, those discussions. But I, I think the issues at three twelve North Highland, I, I just want to make sure the planning board is aware that, that this is the same congregation and, and the issues at that three twelve location should be taken into account um, when deciding, you know, whether or not to, to pass this or to revise this current plan.
Yeah, uh, my name is Jeffrey Bishop. Uh, first of all, I think the um, the idea of putting a religious facility on that road is absolutely ridiculous. Secondly, my father-in-law has lived there for, since nineteen fifty-nine. And, you know, it's just absurd to even do this. Um, I, one of my biggest regrets, because I go to my father-in-law's all the time, biggest regrets are the bus, the buses. They're absolutely absurd the way they drive these feet. It's, it just flies down a little and drive. And the police have been called. We have a, a couple of police officers in the area that live there. They've actually stepped out in front of the bus, yeah, and then spoke to them. Uh, so I just think the whole thing is ridiculous. Uh, and last but not least, you might wake Mr. Isaac up. He doesn't seem to want to participate. He keeps getting up and getting down and going off in somewhere.
Who are you talking about?
Uh, Isaac Stern. Does he, is he interested in this?
I, I, I'm sure that he is, okay? Uh, but we, we don't need to address that. You just need to address what comments that you have.
Well, I did. I've already covered it.
Okay.
And I, I'd like to get your feedback on that.
Um, we're here just to listen today. I'm not responding to the comments that you made. We're taking them, uh, we hear what you say. We've heard, heard what all the other uh, me- members of the public have said, and we're just listening today.
That sounds good. Okay, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the shout out.
Abraham Roskens, please.
Good evening. My name is Abraham Roskens. I live just up the block at eighteen Samuel Road, Chestnut Ridge, New York. I am the president of congregation Dexter Park and have been deeply involved in this project since its inception. In a concerted effort to be sensitive to our neighborhood and neighbors, we have spent over two years searching for the most ideal sholat location that would accommodate the H O W law, as well as the walking distance from our congregation home to the shul, when we do not use the car on Chavess and Yom Tov. As you may be aware, Dexter Park is essentially comprised of three sections. This central, most central section is made of lots that are part of the cluster zoning used to create Children's Park, which will leave lots around one quarter to one third of an acre. In the other areas of Dexter Park, the lots are roughly a half an acre, with the vast majority on non-conforming lots in one way or another. We chose to buy Five Samuel as it is one of the largest lots in the entire neighborhood, and is on a street which was designed for flow-through traffic before being closed off by Clarkston, thereby increasing pedestrian safety and reducing the speed of vehicular traffic on the block. In our estimation, there is no better lot in Dexter Park than this one. But even with all its equalities, it has a challenge of being, of being like close to eighty-five percent of the lots in Dexter Park, which do not comply with the Village of Chestnut Roads, Village of Chestnut Ridge's founding zoning code. Our non-conforming lot width is below required width for the front of the lot, which is over the required width in the rear of the lot. No matter what anyone, individual or congregation would do on this lot, it is a non-conforming and a variance would be required. There have been many iterations to the site plan with human safety, safety being the paramount driver. Side setbacks in the front of the property are a minor challenge in order to maximize safety and traffic flow by having one-way traffic throughout the lot. While you may have seen and heard those who are opposed to this project, I ask you to carefully consider whether the concern is having a house of worship anywhere in a residential area, or the concern is with this lot in this location. My family and myself will most definitely be impacted by the, any potential effects from this project as I live up the block. But nonetheless, we and the majority of the neighbors But nonetheless, we and the majority of the neighbors on the block strongly support this project's approval. Good night.
Hello, everybody. This is Mr. Zetman. Could you hear me?
What's your first name?
Akiva. Good evening, everybody. Thank you very much for hosting it, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Um, I I live in one Samuel, the corner, two doors away from this uh this project. I definitely understand the concerns of, you know, everybody's concern, you know, Maria, the Weaver's my neighbor. I know him very well. Um, and I know the shul, the members, the board are very considerate, um, trying to make it work for everybody. You know, to be the most accommodating as possible, not looking to step on anybody's toes. And I'm very pro the idea because it's something that's essential for us as a community to um raise our children in this atmosphere. That's a, that's what I have to say.
Okay, could, wait, could you just explain what you mean by that, to raise your children in this atmosphere? Just explain that to me?
Yes, as being Orthodox Jews, it's necessary. It's ne- it's necessary to have a synagogue that we could all pray there. And I definitely understand the concerns, but we are, people said that, you know, three in the morning, we're not doing these things, we're trying our best to accommodate. And if anything, if I may say, the foot traffic will alleviate the car, the car traffic. Because if you use the foot traffic going through, the moral, less cars will be used. I know people tested, many people I met around my block testing just to walk, not to use the car, to accommodate the surroundings and to leave it as much as, you know, as comfortable as possible to for and all the surrounding, you know, neighbors and things like that.
Got it. Okay.
My name is Israel Newman. My last name is N E U M A N N. Yes, I would just like to say that um as much as I know, this will um impact the neighborhoods and it will impact me as well. I still think that it's very essential to the neighborhood and I strongly support the project. I understand the neighbors' concerns, they're my concerns as well. But I still think that it's a very important project and I would like to encourage it.
Okay, Mr. Steinlau?
So I uh am a new uh resident of Chestnut Ridge. I just moved here from Riverdale where there's no, not one, not two, but even four synagogues. This is not unusual. This is a very nice neighborhood. But that's a neighborhood with thousands of people. This is a small neighborhood. Um, it's also um important to mention that only one of those uh synagogues has a parking lot that's adequate to the number of people that are frequent there. All that is fine. Um, with Chestnut Ridge, the situation is much different. This is um, you know, uh, an environment where there are one family homes. And the question that I have in my mind is, why do we have a two hundred member synagogue in such an environment? And why do we need a forty car parking lot, which is of course inadequate to this situation? Uh, I don't think, again, as has been mentioned by other others before me, that this was uh the original design of this neighborhood. And I think that when you start thinking about where to place a house of worship that would accommodate the residents of this neighborhood, and I want to fully respect the fact that um the folks that um spoke just earlier do need and deserve a house of worship in their vicinity. The question in my mind is, does it have to be in on that lot? And if so, can we accommodate it? Uh, in the sense that forty car parking lot that would create a whole variety of um conditions that are not desirable, such as traffic, such as lighting, um pollution and others, is that situation that is desirable for the synagogue? So fully respect the the need to have one. I have an issue with the location and I have an issue with the additional um uh parking that it uh brings to bear.
When you say, when you say the additional parking, what do you mean?
I mean that if you allowed uh this uh this building to be erected on that spot with a parking lot for forty cars, you're creating the potential for higher traffic. You're creating the situation where there could be light pollution. You're getting a whole variety of conditions that are just not um desired.
Okay, the 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 number of parking spaces, it's based on the code requirement. So they're they're meeting the code requirement, they're asking for a variance. Uh, the code requires parking, so whether it's forty cars, fifty cars, sixty cars, if this project is gonna go ahead, it's uh it's probably gonna go ahead. It's gonna have to have a parking lot because the code, the code requires it. So it's gonna have to have a parking lot.
Well, I understand the code requires parking, but does the code require that a building of this size would be placed in a residential neighborhood?
Yes, well, yes. Right now, the size of the building falls within the parameters of the local law that was passed, which indicates they can have a a building up to ten thousand square feet. Now, we can't, we can't tell them you can only have a congregation of a hundred and forty-two people. They've obviously uh come up with a calculation of how many people live in the neighborhood that would utilize this synagogue and probably fact it in some sort of expansion. So that's, that's how they uh got to to the number. Or they just felt that let's build the maximum that we can under the code of ten thousand square feet. We'll have to look into that. I'm not sure which way they approached it.
Well, all that is speculation.
Right. Correct. Is there anything else?
I uh support previous comments that have been made by uh others before, but this is um my concern in particular.
Okay. We thank you.
Okay, the next person is ADN.
Is that, is that a first name or a last name?
It's a first name.
Okay, and what is your last name?
Uh, Shapiro, S H A P I R O. You know, listening to this, I I I just, I I I'm really against having a house of worship in a residential area. We all grew up here.
Wait, wait, can I, can I just stop you for one second? Okay, so we're a planning board and we have to follow certain regulations. We have a zoning code to follow. We have a subdivision code to follow. And I, at some point, uh when people were making comments, I pointed out that the state of New York says that houses of worship belong in a residential zoning district. So you can't zone them out. Um, with, the village had a regulation um which required five acres of zoning. And that was questionable whether it was legal or not to do that. And then they enacted this local law, number one of two thousand nineteen, which has three different classifications for uh ha- uh community place of worship, a neighborhood place of worship, and a residential gathering place. And they're filing under the neighborhood place of worship, which allows a neighborhood place of worship under certain conditions in the law. And basically, we have to follow that, okay?
I understand, I understand that, but as residents that live in the area where this is, this is gonna be proposed, we don't have, we don't have a say. We don't have a say.
Okay, cool.
We don't have rights. You tell me where our rights are as residents of Chestnut Ridge. You tell me.
Okay, I'll tell, I'll tell you, I'll tell you what I know, okay? That when the village proposed this local law, they had at least two public hearings, okay? There might have been three, I'm not sure. And they heard from uh members of the public who were in favor of regulations of this type. Or they heard from people who felt that they should, it shouldn't be uh enacted. And then the village enacted these regulations um the way they felt that they should have enacted them. And unfortunately, whether we as a board like the regulations or not, we're empowered to follow the law, just like we're empowered to follow the zoning regulations and the site plan regulations.
Do you know how many homes, do you know how many homes in the Chestnut Ridge Village area that have places of worship that they go and pray? And they're breaking the law because you guys, as well as the Chestnut Village Hall, does not track down on more than ten people or less they're supposed to be in the house of praying. What do you think is gonna happen? If this gets passed, they're gonna do more things at that we are not gonna have any rules or any rights at all. This is wrong. How would you like this in front of your home or two or three homes? How would you like this to be proposed, this this house of worship? This area, Chestnut Ridge, we all grew up in. Our parents bought homes, we bought homes. This is a residential area. This needs to be put on a main street, not in a residential area. Yes, you come back and tell me that this this thing was proposed, that they're able to do this. This is wrong. I I I don't even believe why we're even having this conversation. What are you guys going to do, any of you? You listen to us tonight, you hear us emotionally upset about this. The area obviously has changed within the last five years. We call the police, the buses come through, they do what they want, they don't follow the rules, they don't social distance, they don't put masks on. I'm not a racist. They, everybody's allowed to do whatever they want, they could pray, but not in a residential area. This need needs to be put, wait a minute, I'm not done yet. This needs to be put on a main road. I don't want a church here and I sure don't want a uh a mosque here. And definitely not a house of worship where this is proposed. I don't believe the majority of the residents of Chestnut Ridge agrees with this.
Okay, okay, okay.
I've spoken to so many people and most people are against this. I just wish more people would get out and vote all of you out of office who support this. This is what I wish. It's wrong. Let this be in front of your home.
I hear you.
An educated conversation and let me see how you would like it. You know what this is gonna bring. It's gonna bring more traffic. There's enough buses that are coming through that we have to deal with this. This is wrong. It doesn't belong here. And I'm wasting my time because I feel like I'm talking to walls. What are you gonna do? You're listening to all of us tonight. It's ridiculous. You know, as well as I know, this does not belong in a residential area. This belongs in an area on a main road.
Are you, are you finished?
Awkward.
Okay, are you finished?
Yeah, I'm finished.
Okay, I I I understand your concerns, but let me, let me ma- add add this because this, this board does not do the enforcement. If there are enforcement issues, that is the building department and the code enforcement offices in the building. We can, we can only review and approve.
Since you brought that up, I don't know how many times I have called Chestnut Village Hall up complaints about certain things going on that's illegal. Do you, do they return my calls? No. Do they even have the audacity to investigate what's going on? No. So who do I go to? I call the police. The police are, hands are tied. They can only do so much. So what are we supposed to do as residents? To lay down in the street and let all this happen?
Okay, all right.
It's a waste, it's a waste, it's a waste, it's a waste, all of you.
The most that are being expressed have nothing to do with our application at this point.
Right, okay. All right, we.
I'm done.
We heard you. Thank you.
Yeah, you're important. Oh, that's what I'm talking to, a freaking wall.
Trainer, this is Maggie Trainer and I appreciate your service. Um, for the record, I have a three, three point. Uh, one was I was not notified and nor was any of my neighbors who I spoke with about this. I'd like to say for the record, I grew up on Lillian Drive. So I have lived here my entire life and my parents were first owners here. And um this proposal, even though I do um embrace the um fact and the law of a neighborhood house of worship, but this proposal is not a proposal that is in keeping with the character of this neighborhood. Um, Mr. Stroh referred to the people searching for two years and the neighbors approved. That that's not so. This is absolutely much too big for Samuel Road. And the other piece is that Samuel Road is not a piece of Dexter Park. Samuel Road is part of what was, is known as Pascaq Homes. So this neighborhood issue is, has nothing to do with Samuel Road. A seven thousand square foot structure on high ground with a parking lot supposedly for forty cars is not a neighborhood house of worship. My um embracing the fact that my neighbor, my new neighbors will need a neighborhood house of worship is so that they go on foot, not in cars. So the parking lot whole thing is just, I think, bizarre. And the other thing is, there has been no mention through any of this of a a traffic impact study. The traffic in this little tiny community neighborhood where I grew up, I mean, we sleigh ride, we we were sleigh riding down Lillian Drive in such freedom as children. I can't even walk in broad daylight without taking my life in my hands. The traffic is out of control. And it is not just school buses. It is nonstop, high speed, unpoliced, unleashed traffic. And it is absolutely dangerous. Samuel Road is a essentially a one uh lane road at a time. This is not a place for something with this uh huge amount of um proposed uh participation. Um, and I will finish where, excuse me. I am absolutely opposed to this. I'm not opposed to a neighborhood house of worship, but this is not in character with this neighborhood. And the village of Chestnut Ridge was established back in the day to ensure that this very thing would not occur to our homes and our lives.
Uh, Gary Aman is on.
Okay, I'm sorry. You're speaking to Linda Aman. Um, as Mr. Baum mentioned at the last planning board meeting on December third, you often like to hear from present neighbors of these existing congregations. And I happen to live across the street from the present location, so I fit that criteria. I will begin by saying that although the village enacted this law in February of twenty nineteen, this particular congregation has totally ignored said law. On October thirty first of twenty seventeen, the space that they are using for their house of worship had numerous violations brought against it. As I am sure you are aware, this congregation has never come before the planning board for an application regarding a house of worship at three twelve North Highland. They also have not gotten the building permit that they were instructed by the village justice court to get in February of twenty twenty. Therefore, the unfinished basement has no building plans submitted, no permit, no fire inspections, no shrubbery, et cetera, et cetera. And despite this, both the congregation and the village have turned their backs on this fact. Month after month, I have personally brought these facts up at board meetings and attended justice court just to hear excuse after excuse and extension after extension. So to expect the fact that all local zoning laws will be followed by this congregation for this project and enforced by the village board is lost on my neighbors and myself. Where do I even start as to the nightmare this particular house of worship has created? I'll start with the parking. First of all, they now cramp a regular driveway that probably could comfortably hold six cars at most with up to twenty cars two times daily. So to think this thing might not happen with the originally proposed forty spaces is irrational. As they park behind each other, they often back out onto a dangerous road that has considerable traffic. This does not even address the overflow traffic that spills onto Perth Avenue. They often block access to these neighbors' homes every evening and all day Saturday as these cars are not moved from sundown on Friday until sundown on Saturday. My husband and I have also found cars that drop off congregants to be a problem. As they turn around to get back to where they originally came from, they often turn around in our driveway. This has caused us to put up a trap. has caused us to put up a traffic cone at the entrance of our driveway to protect our grandchildren and their pets from unwanted traffic. In response to a recent reply made by Mr. Stoutch that said a congregation would have to remain within capacity of the sanctuary, one would only think that was common sense. However, our experience has been that this is not true. When this particular congregation was unable to be accommodated by the confines of their illegal basement space, they erected a large event tent for days on end. Another occasion when religious instruction space was limited, they set up desks roadside and held religious instruction right there, so dangerously close to the road that had a child slipped off the chair, they would have definitely been hit by a car. In ending, I haven't even tackled the impact on the surrounding environment, environment. The visual eyesore of the property that is not maintained, increased foot traffic that often walks on the wrong side of poorly lit roads without safety vests, use of heavy equipment to dig for additional parking spots without marking utilities for the safety of the neighbors. And this was done on the weekend and during village hall holidays, making it impossible to get a hold of code enforcers, increased garbage and boxes that are picked up by the town and not by a commercial carter, and the noise caused by the daily in and out of traffic of 40 cars slamming their doors two times daily, starting at 6:45 a.m. and commencing at up to midnight. So to hear how wonderful and what a great neighbor this house of worship will make is like listening to a fairy tale. Thank you.
Yahuda Minsberg. I just came on. I'm not sure about all the comments that are made until now. I just have a couple of quick points. As part of this neighborhood and as part of being on this block, we strongly support this project and feel that this is an essential element to this growing community. This location is, we feel a very, very thought through location as it's very centrally located, and this is walkable for most, it's not all. And we look forward to it. The only complaint is that it's not here already.